Everyone, welcome to a special meeting of the Board of Education. This Wednesday, June 1st. Mr. Miller, can you start us off with the Pledge of Allegiance?
Absolutely. Please stand. Put your right hand over your heart, ready to begin.
The Pledge of Allegiance is applied by the United States of America and to the Republic of Christians, one nation under God, indivisible, with the Lord Jesus Christ our Father.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. We welcome those who are here for the purposes of addressing the Board at the proper time and in the order of their request. If you wish to speak during the meeting, please fill out a form with your name and the agenda item you wish to address. You may also make a request to give testimony on an item not listed on discussion today. However, full discussion on any items not listed on the agenda will have to be delayed until such a time that the item can be publicly posted in advance as a regular agenda item. If you wish to ask questions, please address them to the Chair and not to any individual member of the Board or staff. The Board has been meeting in closed session regarding matters listed on today's closed session agenda and wishes to report that no reportable actions were taken. So, is this the only item that we have? Is this the only person that we have? So, we do have public comment as part of this special meeting. Mr. Pete Marsh, are you here?
I am.
Okay, so what's...
It's about 7.3, so I can wait until then if you prefer or do it now.
Are you okay with doing it now?
Sure.
Why don't you come on up, Mr. Marsh?
Okay.
Welcome. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Pardon me one second. I didn't have my laptop ready. All right. Well, good afternoon. Thank you very much, Board members, staff, fellow citizens. I spoke to you last time about transitions in general and led up to the energy transition. I'd like to speak tonight a little bit about alternative energy and our concept of that and about goal setting. So, alternative energy, we're used to thinking of fossil energy as normal and electric machines as alternative energy. That's so 20th century. It's time for a new paradigm. Even though we're early in the energy transition, we must now think of electric-powered machines or other zero emissions as normal and fossil machines as the alternative and worst-case alternatives at that. I think that's critical to achieving our climate goals as humanity. I make this suggestion from a fiscal perspective as someone who's held a fiduciary duty and understands the gravity of that responsibility. Numerous studies show that zero-emission machines for transport, space heating, water heating, and cooking will save the district and any enterprise money for two reasons. Reason one, lower total cost of ownership. In nearly all cases, electric machines have substantially lower operating costs than fossil machines, even with California's high electricity prices. This is different than the conventional wisdom that most of us have learned over three or four decades of professional experience. But the economics of energy are changing rapidly. Even though CapEx can be 10%, up to even 100% higher for some of these machines, while we can ramp up manufacturing, the reduced OpEx often means lower TCO within three to five or seven years. Goal setting. I have a few excerpts from a recent article by PricewaterhouseCoopers, one of them our key boardroom consultancies. Goal setting is a fundamental leadership skill. It is as much as art as a science because it requires finding the sweet spot between the aspirational and the realistic. And I mention this because I went back and listened to the March Board Workshop and understand all the concerns about realistic goals, et cetera. And so, Pricewaterhouse says, "The leader's job is to set an ambitious target that will bring out the best in an organization's team and achieve what may seem impossible at first." These are what Jim Collins, the author of Good to Great, calls "the big hairy audacious goals." We're often capable of more than we know, and an outlandish target that prompts gulps at first can inspire a team to focus on how it can be achieved. So, for us as leaders, the question has to be, can we see a path to success? And I would just ask, you know, the Board and staff, sorry, to think about that as we consider the Green School Campaign's requests. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment, Letizia?
Yes.
Okay, that concludes our public testimony. We will move on to staff reports. So, we'll start with 2022-2023 Budget Development and Local Control Accountability Plan update. Ms. Takashi?
Thank you. And I'm happy to be joined by Renee Arques, Carmen Hernandez, James Suarez, Viva Mogi, and George Sai to provide this 2022-23 budget and LCAP, Local Control Accountability Plan overview.
And I do want to say that I expect for you to all outdo yourself from your last performance and signs and stuff.
Yeah, we have high hopes.
High expectations. The bar that you set for yourself is high.
The budget and financial reporting happens really all year long. Our budget season really kicks off in January with the Governor's proposal to the state legislature on the state budget for the next year because our state revenues really drive our district's budget. That proposal is revised in May, and then the state legislature deliberates over those proposals, passes a budget, and then negotiates with the Governor, and eventually a state budget is signed by the Governor. In the midst of all that, we are required by state law to adopt our school district budget in the June timeframe, which is where we are right now. To the extent that revenue picture changes after the signage of the state budget, we have 45 days to revise that budget, and we will bring those items to you for adoption. And then we move to execution of the budget with our first interim, second interim, and estimated actuals reports, where we really look at the actual revenues and expenditure trends happening during the course of the year. And through all this, we're adjusting our multi-year projections when new information comes in. And then we finally close the books in September, and then our auditors audit our books and issue their independent audit reports. So, the budget is really a year-long process with multiple checkpoints and opportunities to adjust and to share our financial status with the Board and the community. So, themes for the 2022-23 budget adoption, as I said, the budget is based on the May revision, and the budget incorporates higher-than-expected state revenues. But current economic trends present some real uncertainty, and the Governor, even in his May revision message, said, "Though current cash receipts are high, the war in Ukraine, record inflation, supply chain disruptions, and the current stock market performance really present great challenges for the future or can present great challenges for the future," and he urged fiscal prudence in the face of these circumstances. Our budget incorporates significant one-time revenues, which the Governor proposed, and for our budget, enrollment and attendance are challenging to project and are real risk areas for our budget. And finally, our funding has been coordinated to support the Learning Acceleration and Support Plan. Last year, we laid out a multi-year plan that leveraged multiple funding sources to support the Learning Acceleration and Support Plan, and we continue to support this plan and the budget that we have before you. This is our view of all of our operating funds, which includes the General Fund, Adult Education Fund, Child Development Fund, and our Cafeteria Fund, and you'll see that the General Fund is our main operating fund. It comprises approximately 84% of our revenues. So, that's why we focus a lot, most of our conversations, on the General Fund. Here's our General Fund broken down between different sources. The Local Control Funding Formula, which is 64%, which is addressed in Local Control Accountability Plan. We have our federal revenues, we have our other state revenues, and our local revenues at only 1%. We'd say that the federal revenues and the other state revenues are, would say, I guess, artificially high. The federal revenues incorporate $130 million of the one-time COVID relief funds. This is continuation of the funding that we laid out in our LASP last year. And then we have the one-time revenues, the discretionary block grant that the Governor proposed, approximately $92 million in the other states. So, those numbers are artificially high. Usually, Local Control Funding Formula comprises more of the pie. So, our assumptions underlying our projections for the Local Control Funding Formula, cost of living adjustments, these are the COLAs that were proposed by the Governor. So, for next year, 6.56; the following year, 5.38, 4.02, and these COLAs, of course, will be adjusted as economic circumstances change. The Governor also proposed additional base grant funding of $2.1 billion. Base grant funding is the funding that we receive for all of our enrolled pupils. We have projected enrollment decline for next year of 2.5%. Again, this is very, very challenging for us to project. Historically, we have seen a pattern of approximately 2%. Over the past couple of years, our enrollment decline was 3%, so we are projecting moving forward 2.5%. Attendance rate is equally as important as our enrollment, the rate at which our students actually attend school. Historically, we have been at about 95% to 96%. That's pre-pandemic. But in 21-22, we saw a enrollment rate of 90%. So, and we project in the out-years an increase by 1% annually. So, as we move forward, those numbers may change, but those are projections that are in our budget. The Governor also proposed a new model for funded ADA. Historically, districts have received the greater of the prior year or the current year ADA, except for in 2021 and 21-22, we were allowed to use 1920 ADA, but that hold harmless provision sunsets for next year, and the Governor has proposed a new model in its place. He has proposed a three-year rolling average, and on top of that, he's also proposed utilizing pre-pandemic attendance rates to calculate 21-22 ADAs. So, this is helpful, and this has been incorporated into our budget. We have also incorporated a 63% unduplicated pupil percentage. Our unduplicated pupils are economically disadvantaged, are English-speaking learners or emerging bilingual students, are foster and are homeless youth. And our unduplicated pupil students really drive our supplemental and concentration grant funding, and this funding is provided to us to meet the needs of our most vulnerable students. This percentage has been going down over time. We were at 70% in 2018-19, and this suggests not only that do we have a shrinking student population, but also a changing demographic and with our enrollment loss of our unduplicated pupils and outpacing the district as a whole. And we're concerned about our concentration grant funding because this is funding that we receive for every unduplicated student over the 55%. Over 55% is about $7,500 a student, so substantial funding. And so, we are concerned about the loss of that funding as that percentage goes down. So, again, we'll emphasize our efforts to identify all eligible students, encouraging all of our families to submit the household income form when it becomes available. Here's just a picture of our enrollment decline. We actually topped out in 2003, 2004 at about 96,000 students. So, we've seen a steady decline over the past decade and a half. This is a statewide phenomenon. We'll be really watching this closely and adjusting our projections if we have basis to do so. Again, we have the discretionary block grant that's in our budget. He proposed $8 billion one-time statewide. That's about $1,500 per pupil, and that's $92 million for LBUSD. And if we receive this funding or any one-time funding we receive, we'll be recommending that this funding be used to extend the activities in the Learning Acceleration and Support This is a familiar display showing our multi-year funding plan for the supplemental funds that we've received. We've leveraged multiple expiration dates, spreading the bulk of the funds over three years from 2021-22 through 2023-24. So, if one-time funding materializes, then this would, we would recommend the usage to extend activities in the LASP in '24, '25, and beyond after all of the bulk of the one-time funding expires. So, that's it for the revenue picture. I'll stop here if you have any questions about revenue before I turn it over to Renee for the expense side of the budget. Ms. Arques.
Hi, Ms. Arques.
All right. I'm going to start with going over our general fund expenses this afternoon. So, the operating budget that we have before you is about $1.17 billion. Almost 80% of this is in our certificated and classified salaries and employee benefits. We are a very people-driven organization. Included in these expenditures are approximately $130 million of our one-time federal ESAR dollars being spent according to our plan at the time of our dollars. Some of the assumptions in this budget is that we have prepared for an increase to our STURS and PERS contributions of about 12% over the year before. We have reflected our estimated expenses related to our health benefits and our special ed cost increases, and our salaries and by extension, our statutory benefits such as retirement, workers' comp, unemployment are all reflected at the negotiated Board-approved increases so far. So, the outstanding negotiations not included in our budget as of yet are the CSCA for '21-22 and TALB and CSCA for '22 and '23. This chart is a reflection of our ending balances that we are projecting in this year's budget and in our multi-year projections. To assess our fiscal health, we look at these unrestricted ending balances, and over time, we have built up balances throughout the years. We have not spent all of the money that has come in through the good times so that we have resources available to handle any economic downturn, unanticipated expenses, or allow us to maintain stability in our system. So, a little bit about what is included in these ending balances is Yumi spoke of the $92 million that is in a proposed one-time discretionary block. So, in those balances is that $92 million. Again, we are going to suggest that any one-time dollars we can utilize to extend our LASP plan, and these come from the Governor's May revise. We will watch these and other revisions included for changes and present to you them in our final budget if there's a 45-day revise. These ending balances serve as a cushion and allows to be more strategic in addressing adverse fiscal circumstances. And we are watching in our out-years, you can see the balances on the chart. They did start to dip down, which means that we were receiving or we were spending more than we were receiving in revenue. This is what we refer to as deficit spending. So, in order to maintain our staffing and programs while we monitor this and figure out our next steps, we are going to have these balances as that cushion. Finally, to be in compliance with AB 751, we are going to recommend that we commit these funds to reserves, commit our reserves to maintaining continuity of staffing. So, the AB 751 requires that we commit any of our balances over 10% in order to maintain those balances, and that's what we are going to recommend here today. I would be remiss if I did not bring us back to our tier description of our funding. Here you can see our structure of our district-wide resources broken down by type. The top portion represents federal, state, and local resources provided in our budget for specific purposes. This year, it includes one-time programs of about, or one-time dollars of about $222 million. Those are the ESAR dollars, and that also includes the discretionary block grant. Both of these one-time dollars are in this structure. The bottom portion of about $800 million represents the culmination of our budget engagement journey. It's a little document we here like to refer to as the LCAP. Today, I have some special people to share additional details regarding our LCAP budget, but I wanted to see, before I bring Carmen up, if there's any questions regarding the expenditure portion of this presentation.
Good afternoon, Board President, Board members, and executive staff. Thank you, Renee, for sharing with us how the budget has been allocated for the coming year. And as we transition into the LCAP development, the team and I will share how budget allocations are highlighted in the LCAP for programs and services. The slide in front of you is a familiar and intentional slide. Our budget engagement is an ongoing process, and it doesn't just inform the LCAP, but it informs several recent plans. That's why our emphasis has been on programs and services instead of a particular plan. The input of programs and services gives the flexibility to add a plan that is most applicable and ensures allowability with regulations of the resource. As you can see above, our engagement with the community has informed the ELO Plan, Extended Learning Opportunities Grant, last and this year's Local Control and Accountability Plan, LCAP, the Learning Acceleration and Support Plan, LASP, as well as an LASP 2.0 revise coming in the fall, and the SR3 Plan, Elementary and Secondary School Emergency and Relief Funding. The next slide provides context for the development of the LCAP. Last time we were here, we looked at goals in the draft LCAP, specifically the five goals and measures, and the goals that we looked at were specific under the programs featured in the LCAP. So, Goal 2 talked about supportive schools, and Dr. Simon spoke about the restorative practices found in our middle school programs. We also talked about Goal 3, Academic Progress, and literacy support was highlighted by Dr. Kale that are found in all of our elementary and K-8 schools. Goal 4 and 5 on college and career readiness and active engagement were, Dr. Simon spoke about the impact and importance of wellness centers at 11 of our high schools. Also during our May 18th presentation, we shared some of the data and input that we had received at the time. And as we continue to seek input, I want to remind everyone here and anyone listening and watching at home that they can find the LCAP and feedback form in three languages on our website at lschools.net/LCAP. We also brought attention to the section called LCAP Highlights. We felt it was important enough to mention it once again today because it provides context for the process and development of the LCAP. So, we highlighted five key points in this section, the first being equity. A great effort is taken to demonstrate that there are numerous equity initiatives that drive actions and services, and as a result, it's evidenced and is apparent throughout the LCAP. Local control, evidence is also found of how sites have the flexibility to construct programs and services through the allocation of LCFF funds to schools. Learning Acceleration and Support Plan, which shows the braiding of many resources. With the LASP, we can also articulate how budget engagement and development coordinates several plans. Budget engagement, our focus in each effort is to highlight what is best for students and uplift programs and services to meet their needs. And lastly, we acknowledge how the pandemic continues to have a profound academic and mental health effect on families and students, and as such, much of the services that appeared last year are still part of the LCAP. With this, I'd like to hand it off to Viva to expand more on our goals. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we are, as Renee shared, the pyramid with you earlier. The bottom two section of the pyramid is the LCAP budget, and this chart is breaking down the LCAP budget and is breaking it down, and the LCAP budget is broken down by goals in the LCAP. So, if you would like to know how each goal is broken down by programs and funding associated with it, that can be found in the LCAP posted online. And this next slide was shared previously as well by Mr. Suarez and highlighted the bulk of the LCAP, which are goals. Over half the LCAP is devoted to five goals and their corresponding metrics and actions. These sections detail the measures of effectiveness and specific programs and services as known as actions that are budgeted for implementation next year. The couple of slides will highlight some of the programs and services and, in our LCAP, known as actions within each goal. As we've shared, as much as the community inputs during our ongoing engagement activities have focused on complex and severe adverse effects of the pandemic, and as such, as Carmen also mentioned, you will see a lot of continuation from last year's plan to this year's. And I am going to pass it on to Mr. Suarez.
Good afternoon. Please note that I will not be saying www dot etc. The next three slides will look very familiar in that at the May 18th Board Meeting, we highlighted some actions or programs of the LCAP by goal. As a quick reminder, each goal has several line-itemed programs and services that are budgeted. These are known as actions in the LCAP. In this slide, we highlight the first two goals in the LCAP. Goal 1 is basic services, and Goal 2 is supportive schools. Some of the programs and services are listed for both goals. One of the actions that we want to focus on today is parent outreach and engagement, which includes Parent University. So, with that, I'm going to ask my colleague, Mr. Grayson, to highlight one particularly strong resource for outreach.
Thank you, Jim. And anytime you want to plug the website, please feel free. Do not hesitate to. You do a great job at it.
Will do.
Thank you. So, quickly, an overview of Parent University. First of all, unfortunately, Dr. Lucy Salazar couldn't be here tonight, but she kind of manages the team that runs Parent University. And over, in a quick summary, Parent University provides resources, workshops, training, and support to parent involvement activities that help strengthen the home-school relationship, so home-to-school relationship by offering lots of outstanding options. Some of them are, and this is not limited to these, but some of them are providing opportunities to help parents strengthen their parenting, their literacy, their English-language skills, knowledge and strategies to assist their children in learning at home, which obviously, over the last few years, that's been wildly important, encouraging parental interest and involvement in school organizations and community resources, I'm sorry, organizations and activities, helping parents acquire needed services through district and community resources, training parents, teachers, and principals to build partnerships between the home and school that increases those lines of communication between the school and home, and informing parents about their, of their child's school and opportunities to collaborate with them with school leadership and school leadership to build and refine school programs. But we want to highlight some of the things on the website when it comes to the Parent University Resource webpage. So, for the past couple of years, Parent University has recreated the resource webpage, which includes a wealth of information, including things like social emotional learning. It has 10 videos and recordings of parent workshops, such as today's youth anxiety and how parents can help, empathetic listening and the art of setting limits. We've got technology support, such as how to use Canvas and how to use Parent View. We have community resources, so job opportunities, continuing education, virtual wellness center, which has resources and handpicked, I'm sorry, resources handpicked by our Family Resource Center staff, which you'll be hearing more about shortly, self-guided workshops, such as building resiliency and growth mindset. And in addition to those videos, there's a section of other videos for parent and parent workshops that hold over 150 different training videos. Parent groups have, also have a section in the updated Parent University webpage. The good news is that... The good news is that the webpage continues to grow with different type of supports, workshops, and other resources as we help those parents connect with the community. We've had lots of great internal conversations about ideas on how, you know, what different things parents want to hear. We got to hear from them on what things they want to learn from us. So expect some really great things coming in the future. But it's not just videos that you'll see on the Parent University page. As the different health restrictions have loosened, Parent University has hosted and will continue to host in-person workshops. And so we invite the community to go to the webpage by going to -- where's the -- do you guys have the signs, the LB Schools? No? Oh, man. All right. That's disappointing. But lbschools.net, scrolling down to the Graduation Cap, click on Parent University. You click on the Grad Cap, and then you click on the top button, Visit the Parent Resources Website. So anyone who is watching right now, please go to the Parent University page. It's something that we really want to grow. You know, we have a lot of parents that are using Parent University at this time, but it's such a great resource that we really want to -- we're going to work hard over the next year and continuing after that to continue to kind of bring people to the Parent University webpage and have them sign up for our different programs. With that, back to you, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Grayson. Slide, please. So this slide is representation of Goal Three, and it contains the largest amount of programs and services. The goal states, "Students will make academic progress on the Common Core State Standards so they can be prepared for both college and careers upon high school graduation." As you can see by this slide, there are several areas in which the LCAP draft focuses on academic achievement, including academic support staff at schools, expansion of the interpreter unit for language access, allocation to school sites of LCFF funds so that they can make decisions about how best to meet the needs of their own students, tutoring, and the Black Student Achievement Initiative. Today, we are highlighting Action 3.9 in the LCAP, Transitional Kindergarten Teachers, Who Instruct Some of Our Youngest Students. I will defer to the expertise of Mr. Moskowitz to give more details in his upcoming presentation about Universal Pre-Kindergarten. So stay tuned for that. Slide, please. Thank you. The final two goals are College and Career Readiness and Active Engagement. Both of these goals have many supports for students, such as additional counseling and nursing services, as well as foster youth services. Mental health and counseling supports have been a top priority for the community during our month-long, months, excuse me, months, plural, long engagement when we ask for input of what programs and services are needed for students. On this slide, we highlight Action 4.1. To briefly expound on additional counseling services, I asked Dr. Simon to review some of these services specifically around the Family Resource Centers and attendance counseling.
Thank you, Mr. Suarez, Board President, Dr. Benitez, Board members, and also our community members who are watching tonight or this afternoon, excuse me. During the last board meeting, we highlighted we uplifted the great work that our wellness centers were doing, our Family Resource Center staff. And we didn't mention the work that our All-in Attendance Campaign counselors are doing as well. All of these support staff members are comprised of counselors, social workers, and also school psychologists, who have all provided support to students and families via counseling, also by canvassing our communities, meeting our families where they are, providing socially-emotional behavioral health-related needs support. And we use that terminology just because we know that sometimes mental health can be a stigma in many of our cultures. So we try to, right, make that a little bit softer for many of our families. And also providing the basic needs, right, whether that's food. We talked about our food pantries that are located in our wellness centers, housing, medical support, and many other basic need supports as well that we are providing our families in the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Simon. And now I'd like to bring a close to this presentation. Here is Assistant Director of State and Federal Programs, George Tsai.
May I ask Dr. Simon one question? I heard you phrase our attendance support counselors and our all-in program, and that's different phrasing than you've used in the past. And I think for some folks, when they think about the all-in program, they might think of a compliance or an enforcement, why aren't you in school, kind of program? And the way you're phrasing that is different. So can you just talk about that again, that that program is -- who is staffing that program? And the work really specific that they're doing? Because I think there is a perception that that's really a, let's get you back in class.
Absolutely, Vice President Kerr. So it is twofold, right? It is to get our students back in class, but it's also used as a restorative practice for our families and communities. So for one, we know with chronic absenteeism, there is a compliance component to that, right, ensuring that our students don't reach that 10% threshold. But with the work that our early prevention specialist counselors within the all-in program are doing, they are working with school sites to look at attendance bands, to see which families they should connect with, just based on them being on the cusp of chronic absenteeism, but also working with those families very deeply, right? Cavicing the communities, conducting those home visits, what we call porch visits, to keep folks safe, to understand why those students are not attending school. So based on those conversations, right, we are learning, we're cleaning that it's because many families are facing housing insecurity, may not have adequate food for their home, maybe facing transportation issues or many of the issues that are impacting their families. So with that, they're used as more of a restorative piece, staff, but also help provide, right, that compliance piece that we need as a district as well. So again, twofold prong approach.
Come on, Mr. Tsai.
Hi, good afternoon. So in terms of our next steps, after today's public hearing, we will be coming to you at your next board meeting to ask that you approve the LCAP and the district budget. That'll be on the 22nd of June. A week before that, we will be completing and posting two documents. One you see there as the report, where we will be addressing all the community input during this budget engagement process. And then we will also have a response to answer the questions presented to us from DCAC and DLEC parent groups. So where do you go for the LCAP, or where do you go to present feedback and questions, you may ask? Well, in order to do that, we have our trustee colleagues here who can tell you that you can go to lbschools.net. And at that district website, there is a Local Control and Accountability document there or icon that you click on. You can access the newest revised LCAP draft there, along with a link to questions and feedback. That particular address is lbschools.net/l. All right, all right, we're good, sorry. We only took eight hours to rehearse that, but we're okay. So we hope everyone has really gotten a lot out of this whole process in terms of the information presented, the engagement efforts. And we hope on the 22nd that you'll be able to approve the LCAP and the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Did I do it right?
Mr. Itzen? I'm expecting like some kind of filter or glitter or something on the YouTube when that part of the video gets transmitted. Yeah. Some hyperlinks there. Colleagues, any questions?
Just make a quick comment, and that is that we have been -- We have been through this before, and I think this is mostly for the public to understand all the better as we come into the approval process for this very important work that we do every year. And so I don't have any specific questions right now. We've gone through this. There are questions that will come and that will need to be answered on the 22nd of June. But thanks for this information. Again, it's a seminal part of what it is that we do. Thanks.
I do have a couple of questions, one for Ms. Takahashi. If you could, at our next board meeting, not for tonight, elaborate a little bit more on what seems to be a juxtaposition of us losing students year to year, 2% to 3% over the last 10 years that we presented data. But at the same time, that at least on the balance sheet, it looks like we have more money. So for next year, the projection for their ending balance is 476 million. So you touched on sort of why we're doing that and the plans and why it's important strategically to end that way and then transfer over to our reserves. But I'm wondering, given that we are juxtaposing losing funds, particularly from our unduplicated students, that we end up with higher end reserves in the next few years? So, you know, not for tonight, for next time. And I do want to highlight part of what Dr. Simon just shared. I think for me, it's important to remind us that even though we're passing the LCAP at our next meeting, that this is a year-long, ongoing budget engagement process. And it's our commitment to be open and transparent, but it's also a reminder of a call that we base these recommendations on our input from our community stakeholders, students, parents, and how important it is to continue engaging with our students, community members, and parents. So as we've heard here tonight, one of the areas that is of utmost importance to our community members is around mental health, Dr. Simon, and social-emotional well-being. And we've heard that from students. We've heard that from parents vis-à-vis the input from our engagement process. We've also heard it from staff. I'm going to put you on the spot here, Dr. Camerino. One of the things that you shared at, I don't remember if it was at our last meeting, but definitely within the last two meetings, is the challenge that we have right now as a district because of the wonderful work that our staff at our wellness centers and family resource centers are doing, that students want them to go on field trips, but we can't pull them away, right, because they serve an important role in continuing to serve our students. So I'm going to get to you, Dr. Camerino. But I want to highlight that because, yes, in that case, we're talking about our wellness center staff or FRC staff, but really, we're talking about ultimately what's going to give us the educational outcomes that we want as a district. And that's students' well-being, sense of belonging, connectedness, engagement, overall healthy, mental health. And I don't want community members to feel like this is an end-all-be-all, the approval process that we need for you to continue engaging. We need for our students to continue letting us know what's important to them, not just for their well-being, but for their ultimate, in our case, academic success, but their own personal and continued success. You know, we had a wonderful video of our most inspiring students, you know, just in the last few weeks. And I want to be very conscientious that when these items get reflected in the budget, that's one of the items that's in all five goals. Right? And so I challenge our executive team to continue engaging with our communities, with our students. I challenge our executive team to continue prioritizing that, given that we don't know what the next three years is going to look like from a budget scenario, that we have money now, right, that needs to be spent, probably not to hire more permanent counselors and social workers, because that's not sustainable. But what can we do now, this year, the next two years, the next three years out? Our world is very different today than it was three years ago. We don't know what's around the corner. And we've heard from our students, they need us now. We've heard from our parents, they need us now. We've heard from our teachers, our nurses, our counselors, our staff. They need help and support now. So it's a challenge to our executive team because we know it's a priority. But I really would like to hear more about that, not just at next board meeting, but on an ongoing basis. How are those areas going? We've heard from our staff, our FRC staff at the board workshop, and they said, gee, you know, we know we have an impact. Students tell us we have an impact. Can we provide these tools and resources for students earlier, right, whether that's at the middle school or elementary school, so that by the time that they need help again or that they can provide help to other students, that it's a reaffirmation, a strengthening, rather than the first time that some students are receiving this additional help and resources? So I'm going to bring it back to you, Dr. Camerino, just so that you can highlight that point of not just the sense of urgency, but the consideration of our budget here through the LCAP is not a one-time thing, right? We need to continue engaging. We need to keep hearing from our community members and from our students so that we don't end up with having to figure out, do we keep staff here? Do we need outstaff over here? What really is the bottom line for our students? Dr. Camerino?
Thank you. And what I wanted to share too, especially after distance learning and the pandemic, you have to realize that half of our students at our high schools did not have any connections with staff in real time, right? It was all on computers. And more than 2/3 of our students at the middle school level didn't have connections either with the students when they came back to school. So a lot of our students didn't know where to connect or who to connect with. So when you think of the word wellness center, that's a place where you can go. And I would argue that our teachers are also trained in being able to support, and our staff too, but students just don't know those roles, that they can reach out to those students, to the point to what Dr. Cale is doing with her team and curriculum leaders in revamping and doing a lot of auditing of our curriculum and our curriculum guides, is that we really are looking at the pieces of not just the content delivery, but also the warm and demanding, the SCL components, the graduate profile that we're trying to help our students really have that collective student advocacy and student voice that we want to uplift as much as possible. And I think our students, and especially our teachers, are doing a wonderful job, are really highlighting that. And we're striking while the iron is hot right now because we know that's really a sensitive piece of not only uplifting student voice, but also teacher voice. And I think as students start to now make connections with their teachers, with our staff at schools, realizing that because it says wellness center, I can go there, but it can also go to many of our staff members who are being trained as we speak and continue to write the curriculum to really support our students and teachers in a lot of SCL-type environments.
Thank you. Anyone else want to add from the executive perspective?
One of the things that I would add, Dr. Benitez, is also for families or caregivers to stay engaged with their schools. Our highest-end schools have considerable funding that their school site council, in many cases, our school site council make recommendations and make approvals of. And so oftentimes, schools, if they are not fully engaged with their families, they carry over funds. And we have encouraged them over the last couple of years to really think about what a good budget means and what good spending means at the site level. And so that's another way that parents can be involved beyond just the LCAP and the district budgeting, is to really be at the local level, working with their, with other parents and with the school teams.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. And also in the other spaces, right, our Parent University spaces. So our budget engagement process is not the only place that we can provide input. Certainly, it guides our thinking across the year, but thank you for highlighting that schools have their discretionary budgets as well. So just in the spirit of keeping with our time here, I will move us on to our next item, which is our Expanded Learning Opportunities Program, ELOP, and Universal Pre-Kindergarten, UPK plans. Mr. Moskowitz.
Nice bookmark. You heard from Dr. Camerino talking about the wellness centers at the high school. And while we need to consider, continue to consider over these next several years, how we're going to support our students with acceleration and any trauma they may have experienced in recent years, something else we can think about is how do we start our youngest, our littlest students off with a very strong foundation so that we don't have to accelerate later, so that we don't have to intervene later? So a lot of our conversation today over the next 30 minutes or so are really talking about the plans we're putting in place to support our students from the earliest age up through our middle school years. So we are talking today about our ELOP and UPK plans. So since, you know, we use a lot of letters, I just told this team, I actually need them to run upstairs and cut out a couple of other letters because we do need that website reference. We'll come back to that. I am joined today with Cindy Young. You'll recall back in March, the kind of the first part of this presentation, we came to board workshop and shared with all of you our initial plans around some of our after-school programming and our UPK plans coming from the state. Today, we are coming to you with some more concrete plans, with the idea that ultimately you will be approving those plans here in the coming weeks at our next board meeting. But right after that board workshop, Cindy was promoted to the position of Senior Director, Early Childhood and Expanded Learning, really in large part to carry forward this work with ELOP. So she'll be up in a moment to share some more details. I want to just pull up some of the actual language from Education Code related to both ELOP and UPK. You may be asking, why are we combining ELOP and UPK into one presentation? And I think some of the language in the ed code And I think some of the language in the ed code will help to understand why. So first part related to ELOP, it says at the bottom, "An ELOP plan needs to be approved by the LEA," that's you, the School Board, "governing board, in a public meeting and posted on the LEA's website." And you'll hear in a moment from Cindy about how our ELOP plan is currently posted and how parents can access it to give us some feedback. So we'll hear a little bit more about our after-school and summer programming plans. But then the connection to UPK, and you may remember this slide from when we were together in March, it actually says, and this, some people ask, why are we, why did we move forward with full-day TK and full-day kindergarten? And I'll talk a little bit more about those in a few minutes. But part of the impetus came from the ed code that said that districts need to develop a plan for how all children in the attendance area of the LEA will have access to full-day learning programs the year before kindergarten. So referencing what would a full-day TK program look like. But it also says down at the bottom, "That meets the needs of parents, including through partnerships, of the LEA's expanded learning offerings." So the state was very intentional about combining the plans for universal pre-kindergarten with the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program grant funds that were coming our way. So that's really the impetus for why they're together. So with that, I will ask Cindy to come on up and share the details of the ELOP planning, and then I'll come up afterwards to talk a little bit more about UPK. Cindy?
Good afternoon. This is a very exciting time for our district and for the services that we'll be able to provide our students and our families. As you know, our district has a very robust RAP program. Currently, we receive about $12 million to support students in after-school or wraparound services, in addition to the 21st Century monies. In addition to that, we've received an additional $17.3 million to expand our opportunities and our reach for students. This is a huge opportunity for our children across the district. In an effort to make all of this happen, we have to have a dedicated team of individuals to bring all this together. And we have several of those team members that have joined us this afternoon, so I'd like to take a moment to introduce them. We have Debbie DeDenn, who is our program administrator, leading the effort. She's been leading the effort for RAP, and she's now taking on the additional responsibilities that this additional grant monies bring. Stephanie Dunn is also joining her as a program administrator. We have Tracy, one of our TOSs, has joined us this evening. In addition, Chris Damon has been promoted to Assistant Director and Christina Cortez as Program Coordinator. Both of them will serve 50% in the elementary, early learning at elementary office and 50% in the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program. So I'm very excited to have the opportunity to work with these individuals. What I'd like to do this evening or this afternoon is highlight some of the special things that come with the ELOP program monies. When we talk about the learning and after-school principles, these are more commonly referred to as LIAS, so we have more alphabet soup. These principles are basically the common core standards of after-school programs. We have five key components: learning that is active, learning that is collaborative, learning that is meaningful, learning that supports mastery, and learning that expands horizons. When we talk about active learning, we know that young people need to be involved in doing. We need to, we know that they need to be physically active, we need to stimulate their innate curiosity, and that they do a lot with hands-on and project-based projects. When we think about learning is collaborative, after-school programs are well-positioned to build skills that allow young people to learn as a team. This includes listening to others, supporting group learning goals, resolving differences and conflicts, and making room for each member to contribute his or her individual talents. When we think about learning that's meaningful, young people are intrinsically motivated when they find their learning is meaningful. And I would say that's true of anyone. When you find meaning in something, then you find it more interesting. Motivation is increased when the learning is relevant to their own interests, experiences, and the real world in which they live. Rather than learning that is focused on academic subjects, after-school programs should keep young people, have the, young people apply their academic skills to the area of interest and real-world problems. Learning that supports mastery, young people tell us they are most engaged when they're given opportunities to learn new skills. Activities should be explicitly sequenced and designed to promote the layering of skills that allow participants to create a product or demonstrate mastery in a way they could not do before. And finally, learning that expands horizons. Young people benefit from learning opportunities that take them beyond their current experience and expand their horizons. After-school programs have the flexibility to go beyond the walls of their facilities. They use the surrounding community as a classroom and bring in individuals and businesses that young people may not otherwise have come into contact with. Expanding young people's horizons also includes helping them develop global awareness. And as I was thinking about and reading and kind of wrapping my arms around these five core areas, it made me think about the things that students or the things that we're going to expose children to, our executive functioning skills, which we know are very important in order to produce young adults that will be productive in our society. But it also seems that these core content areas focus on our birth-to-12th grade beliefs and around learning for students. So academics versus enrichment in after-school programs. With the understanding that the regular school day has limited time for additional practice and reinforcement, we really strive to engage all students in content areas through a unique approach to learning. The ELOP program commences immediately upon the conclusion of the school day, and it operates until 6:00 PM. This provides an opportunity for students to be engaged in a safe, academic, enriching environment after school. ELOP provides students with opportunities to participate in integrated activities in areas of literacy, math, science, visual and performing arts, character education, service learning, social emotional learning, which we've heard a lot about already this evening, physical fitness, health education, and more. College and career readiness, life skills, and vital social skills are addressed in alignment with the common core standards. ELOP programs promote academic success by providing opportunities for students to expand on concepts taught during their instructional day. Okay. Let's see here. There we go. So I wanted to talk about some key program requirements. These are must-dos with the funding that we're receiving. We must offer a program to all students. And in Long Beach, we're offering transitional kindergarten through eighth grade. We must offer a nine-hour program, and that includes a six-hour instructional day with the addition of three-plus hours after-school for wraparound services. That it's offered for all school days plus 30 intercession days, which could be spread out over Thanksgiving, winter, spring, and summer break. What we do know is that this is a huge program and that our district can't do this in isolation, so we must continue to engage with our community partners and build on those partnerships. In the TK portion of the day, our ratios will never exceed 10 students to one adult. That there will be a focus on academics as well as enrichment, and that we must develop an ELO plan, which we are presenting this evening. As you know, this plan is very exhaustive and very detailed. And so I wanted to just highlight four key areas that kind of bubble to the top. Youth, voice, and leadership. So when we talk about youth, voice, and leadership, it's a key component of the ELOP program is to engage youth in authentic and meaningful leadership roles. ELOP staff adhere to the philosophy that programs and activities should be student-centered and based on student voice and choice. When we think about diversity, access, and equity, ELO programs will create environments in which students experience values that embrace diversity and equity. We recruit staff from diverse cultural backgrounds with a myriad of experiences to share with students to enhance overall programs. And then the two areas that are bolded out, these are areas that are our greatest need, and these came out of the Collaborative Partners Management Team survey as our greatest needs. They are written in our Quality Improvement Plan, they're standing agenda items, they're points of discussion in meetings for PD and curriculum. And we heard tonight that healthy choices is something that's very important to our students, especially now, more than ever. The ELOP program recognizes the link between student health and learning and desires to provide a comprehensive program promoting healthy eating and physical activity for all students. But if you're going to have a quality program, you also need to have a quality staff. Recruitment and retention of quality staff are important to serve youth. The ELOP seeks to employ staff members who have experience with expanded learning programs in urban school environments and who are passionate about developing youth and helping to maximize their fullest potential. We strive to also hire a diverse staff reflected of the diversity in our student population. In order for a program to be successful, we know that stakeholder feedback is important. A key component of the ELOP plan involves community input. LBUSD has several committees representing a diverse cross-section of our district and community. In addition to these forums, we have created a survey that will be disseminated today to all TK to eighth-grade families at 4:00 PM. This input will help guide our actions as we continue to map out our programming for our children and students that begins this summer. We also know as parents, community members, and as district staff begin to review the details of the ELOP plan, there may be questions and concerns, comments that arise. In an effort to be proactive and address these in a timely fashion, we've created a centralized email address, which is posted there. It will be elopquestions@lschools.net. No, I need the, sorry, I need the LCAP. Yeah, it's out of order. Thank you. Okay. So bringing it all together, we heard information this evening about our LCAP plan. The ELOP plan and the UP program plan align with our current LCAP plan. As stated in our superintendent's goals in our strategic plan, across an organization, alignment or systemness ensures that there is clarity of purpose, the North Star, goals and initiatives that the entire organization is working to achieve. The alignment of standards, curricula, instruction, and assessment ensures that what students are expected to learn is supported by the curricula and instructional practices assessed and assessed to determine the degree to which students learned. Our ELOP and our UPK plans, although new, align with this district strategy. So I'd like to take an opportunity now to open it up for discussion and questions. And I'd like to invite Debbie forward to help address any questions that might arise.
I have a quick question about the grant money. Is that grant money, I saw somewhere where it was expiring at the end of September, is there an extension on that?
For the ELOP monies, it's ongoing.
It's ongoing?
Mm-hmm. And as of now, we don't have a date where they're going to terminate funds.
Okay, thank you.
Well, as your quest, as we move into the UPK component...
Do we have time for one question, Mr. Moskowitz?
Please, yes, absolutely.
Just to reinforce, you're sending out the survey at 4:00 for all pre-K to, or TK to eighth-grade families. So we envision programming on every school site?
Every one of our elementary, K-8, and middle schools will have an after-school program next year.
Okay, so in some places, we've had a limited capacity, maybe it's just, you know, a coach on the playground for an extra 45 minutes. So there will be programming at every elementary and K-8 site next year. So that's, hence the word expanded.
Yes.
So all families will have an opportunity, they won't have to go to a different school to utilize the program.
Correct. Some of our sites right now have after-school programs that are fee-based for parents based on need, and we will continue to have some fee-based programs. We are working right now with the budget that we receive from the ELOP funding to greatly reduce the cost for some families and in many cases, make it free if families earn under a certain threshold. So we'll be communicating that out to our families in the near future. There will be some version of kind of a sliding scale based on family need, but we will have free options available at every one of our sites for those students who qualify.
I think to your point, Board Member Kurt, like this is huge for our district.
Yeah, so, and some families have, you know, chosen not their neighborhood school because there weren't appropriate after-school programs for them that worked with their family's schedule. So potentially, you may have more families that stay at their neighborhood school because now we have options that they weren't afforded before.
Absolutely. And we've been challenged over the years by parents wondering why we don't have more after-school programs for our TK and kindergarten students, and that has been a big challenge. That's one of the benefits of our full-day TK and kindergarten program is that students will be in school for the full six hours, but even beyond that, we will be prepared to offer the ELOP after-school programming for our TK, K students as well.
And the key for me is that it's, in addition to the academic, and this is enrichment activities that we're talking after-school, so really a shift in terms of, I don't want folks to get nervous when I use this term, but our full-service community school model, where you have additional programming in the neighborhood at your school.
Yeah, very much so a wraparound service, where we're going to try to support the whole child in every way that we can throughout that nine-hour day.
Mr. Miller?
You've already answered my question. No need. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moskowitz.
All right, so let's talk then about UPK. So you'll often hear districts use the term UPK and UTK interchangeably. They are different. So universal pre-kindergarten is a larger umbrella. We shared this slide back in March. It includes things like child development centers, state preschool, Head Start programs. It includes things like our community centers, our home-based programs. So all of those are under the umbrella of UPK. In Long Beach Unified, as you know, we're very privileged to have high-quality CDC Head Start programs as well as TK programs. So when we were thinking about how we chose to implement our UPK plan and develop our UPK plan, we really were looking at how can we combine the expertise from our pre-kindergarten programs that we currently have in place in our CDC and Head Start programs and our high-quality TK programs as well. And so you'll see a lot of overlap as we share some of the details. So in our full-day transitional kindergarten program, so next year, we are expanding the, our TK offerings. Forty-seven of our 54 elementary and K-8 sites, including Avalon, will have a TK program. Over the coming years, we do expect to have a TK class at every site, as if you'll recall, this next year, the enrollment for TK is for students who turn five between September 1st and February 2nd. The following year, that moves back to April 2nd, June 2nd, and then a full year. So in the coming couple of years, our TK programming is going to be expanding to more eligible students, which is going to grow the program eventually in the next couple of years to every one of our sites. And in some of our larger sites, we'll actually likely have two TK classrooms. That's actually, this next year, we'll have our first opportunity to have two TK classes at Longfellow. That'll be our first site that has more than one. But it will be continuing to grow over the coming years. Right now, we, as I said, we have four-year-olds in our district serviced by TK, CDC, and Head Start, and we want to continue to build on that expertise. So one way that we're planning to do that is through what we call the partnership model. At two-thirds of our TK classrooms next year, we're going to have a braided funding model, where we're going to have both a TK teacher and a pre-K teacher, either CDC or Head Start, in the classroom at the same time. So students will benefit from having two highly-trained teachers. The pre-K teacher that comes with really a deep understanding of developmentally appropriate practice and early learning assessments, and the TK teacher that comes with a deep understanding of content standards and curriculum. So together, they'll be able to develop that partnership that we know will be most beneficial to our students. So that's a pilot program that we'll be trying this next year. We think it will be extremely beneficial to our students. And then in the other, one-third of our schools where we will be doing another model, is what we would call our teacher paraprofessional model. So those will be folks like our kids club, lead teachers, it will be student aides, I'm sorry, college aides and instructional aides. We'll be looking at a couple of different models to implement at a few of our sites. And part of this, with our, being our first year, we do want to try out a couple of different pilots, find out what appears to be most successful, so that we can then implement the more successful models in the coming years. But we believe all of these, through appropriate training, will be, we're looking forward to the availability of the ratio of 12 to 1, 24 students with two adults, 12 to 1 ratio, that we think is going to create a really remarkable program for our students. Part of this, as we think about UPK and part of it in our planning, we know that, I'm reminded from my colleagues that have more expertise in early learning than I do, that students at the youngest age actually learn from three different places. at the youngest age actually learn from three different places. They learn from their teacher, they learn from one another, and they actually learn from their environments. The classroom environment is actually as important to a young learner as the teacher and what they might get from their peers. And so we've invested, as you know, quite a sum of money to ensure that we have high-quality indoor and outdoor materials, furniture, supplies, that will all be installed in every one of our TK and kindergarten classrooms this summer and be ready for when the doors open and students enter in August, on August 31st. We just trained last week all of our TK and kindergarten teachers, they participated in the training, to learn more about the why for this furniture. We're basing the why, if you will, on what we call the Early Childhood Environmental Rating Scale, sometimes called ECHRS, more letters for you. Really what this does is it is a research-based approach to determining what types of materials should be in classrooms, what types of activities should our littlest students be engaged in on a daily basis, so that they're finding joy in learning, so that they're being able to connect with their peers in a socially-emotionally-safe way, so that they're being able to develop the understanding of things like reading and math, but also some of the more developmentally-appropriate practice like painting and building blocks and working in the dramatic play area with dolls and stoves and all those things that we know students enjoy. So this is not just about more time for academic learning, but it's actually about different ways that students learn, not just sitting on the carpet and listening to the teacher, but interacting with one another, interacting with their environment. So while UPK is really about supporting our four-year-olds, I thought it would be important today, since we are implementing a full-day kindergarten program, to also just talk briefly about that. So all of our schools this next year will be implementing a full-day kindergarten program, that'll be a six-hour program. We are allocating additional staff to support our teachers. Deep appreciation to our kindergarten TK teachers, we know this is a real big change for them, for many of them. We have been piloting, as you'll recall, an extended-day kindergarten program at 11 sites, so we have learned a lot from them, and we've heard a lot from teachers have already experienced it so that we can make it better for others. But we know this is a big shift for people and we understand that. So we're putting supports in place, including additional adult support to be in the rooms when students are there for that extended time. I referenced the new indoor/outdoor play equipment that is going to be supportive of not just, again, more academic learning, but some of the play-based learning, developmentally-appropriate learning that we know our youngest students need. And then we do have plans for that ongoing professional development for our teachers, for our administrators. It's going to look different, our kindergarten classrooms are going to look different than they have for many years, and so we need to make sure that both our teachers and our administrators and our parents understand what a new full-day kindergarten program will look like. But if you look on the right, just as a quick example, you know, our traditional half-day program, our teachers have been really hard-pressed to just meet the basic needs around things like English language arts, if I can say, speak English, English language development for our English learners, and math. That really consumes most of the day in a half-day kindergarten program. With the additional two hours, you're going to have those developmentally-appropriate practices, you're going to have daily outdoor play that is part of a learning opportunity, you're going to have choice centers, and that's an important word, choice, that students get to select where they are within the classroom, including art, dramatic play, blocks, science, and some of those other things that I mentioned. And there will then give the teacher more opportunity for some targeted small-group support as well. So we'll open it up to some questions, but just kind of in conclusion, a couple of opportunities for some input, feedback, and then next steps for you as the board. So this is where I should have had my team have the extra letters available here. But we do have our draft ELOP Expanded Learning Opportunities Program Plan on our district website right now, so if you go to that, it's www.lbschools.net/elo p, right, ELOP, yep. So if you go to that, it's about 80 pages, it's a pretty lengthy plan, but we think that'll give our broader community an opportunity to give some input. As I referenced, as Cindy referenced, we are sending out a survey to all of our TK through eighth-grade families today. It probably went out about 10 minutes ago, you can check Dr. Benitez, see if you got it. That'll give you an opportunity to give some very specific feedback of what you would like to see for your child in an after-school program, summer program as well. In addition, we do have plans to, we will be finalizing our UPK planning, and at the next board meeting, on the June 22nd meeting, you as the board will have the opportunity to approve our ELOP plan and to, not for approval, but to accept our UPK plan that we will then move on to LAECO, L.A. County Office of Education. So just last, as a reference to our broader community who may not be current parents in our school district, we still would like some input and feedback on either of these plans. So there are two email addresses you can use, elo pquestions@lschools.net for any input or feedback, questions around our after-school programming, and tkkquestions@lschools.net for any comments, questions about what we're offering in our UPK and full-day TK and K programs. So again, we'll open it up to some questions.
Colleagues?
Yep, well, first off, thank you, Brian, I think that this is very, very good information once again for, I know at least one person in my district. All things considered, I did have some questions, or confirmation questions around some of the emails that I've been receiving about our growing UPK plan. So just confirmation here, one of the concerns was there would be situations where one teacher would be isolated with a room full of four-year-olds or five-year-olds, up to 30 students at a time, and they'd be in there by themselves. Is that the case?
So there could be times in a day where a teacher would be in their classroom with 30 students. We have that currently in grades one through 12, right? So obviously, in kindergarten, it's different, we have our, some of our younger students. But again, I'll remind you and our folks listening that we have had 11 sites piloting these full days, these extended days for the last year and some for many years, they have had very limited, if any, additional adult support and generally do run the classroom. Now, when we say 30 students in a classroom, that's the capacity by contract. The reality is our average kindergarten class for next year is projected to be around 25 to 26 students, which means that some classrooms will likely be down in the range of about 22 to 23. So each school is a little bit different, numbers of kids coming in and enrolling, they don't come in little packages of 30, but in many cases, our class sizes will be down in the 22 to 23 range, 25, 26. We will have adult support in the classroom throughout the day and week, but there will be times where a kindergarten teacher would be with the students by themselves.
Okay, that's good to know. The second piece was more around the practical stance of the childcare perspective for those younger students after school. I don't know what that necessarily looks like, can you give me some examples of what that may look like?
Sure.
Obviously, we want to have something that's both academically-enriching but a little bit more on the fun side, so if you can just give some more anecdotal.
Yeah, absolutely. So many of our after-school programs that are currently operated through our RAP program are actually operated by community partners like YMCA, ACA, Boys and Girls Club, so they would be the ones that would actually be providing, in many cases, the support. Because we're outfitting all of our TK and K classrooms with the new furniture that's going to support developmentally-appropriate practice, we would envision that the after-school programming will take place in those kindergarten TK classrooms and on the kindergarten playgrounds so that there will continue to be some play-based learning to that. We would also anticipate for students that age, there'd be opportunities for quiet time, rest time, after a six-hour day, they likely will need maybe a little bit of a shut-eye, so we'll have places at mats and things for them to be able to access that. But it will likely be more things like enrichment, opportunities to continue some of the choice that they had during the day. We also have had, in many cases in our, in our schools, through our child development centers, we've had after-school programming through our school-age care that has extended all the way through 6:00 for years, and our pre-K teachers are well-trained and will support all of our district as we expand ELOP to understand what would be best practices for some of the youngest students in those after-school programs.
Thank you.
So we have, we have several dual-immersion schools, so as we implement programming that is TK and younger, are we looking at having staff and programming that will support that language access as well? I understand if that's not, as we just are planning this for the first time and implementing in September, if we don't have a plan for September, do we have a plan to implement that in the future for multi-language schools?
So we actually have, several of our TK classes are currently Spanish-English dual-immersion classes. So Henry, for example, has a dual-immersion transitional kindergarten program, as does Webster. We also have several of our pre-K classes that are currently dual-immersion, including at EduCare and at Webster. So we've, we've had recent experience and will learn from those sites that have done that. And we also are working with, will be working with our community partners as we're bringing in staff to support after-school programming where we can, to bring in the bilingual support. But the after-school programming doesn't necessarily have to be in the dual-immersion language, they can also continue to access those after-school programs in English if that's what the staff is able to provide. But we are looking at how do we expand as we grow our TK programs, where we have dual-immersion programs onsite, how can we bring transitional kindergarten into the fold?
Thank you.
For next time, Brian?
Yes.
Because we have to move on here. So you, Board Member Kurt and I both sort of reiterated that this is a great opportunity, right, that we haven't done this across all of our schools. We do have some schools that have higher demand for after-school enrichment programs and/or summer school. So what does our planning look like for, you know, those programs that fill up faster than others? Will parents have options if, at their particular school, they get, you know, it gets full or is there a waiting list, or can they go to another school? Just through that, and then will there be any Saturday programming, Brian?
Got it, we can, we can bring that back and I can share some information at the June 22nd meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Moskovitz. So we're going to move right into our next items.
Can I just, I just want to acknowledge one thing. Mrs. Craig, had you asked about ELOP funds expiring, and so I just want to acknowledge, this is an example of doing your homework and listening well. In the first presentation on budget and the LCAP, on the multi-year allocation by fiscal year, there is an Expanded Learning Opportunity Grant that does expire in September. And so those are two different things, this is ongoing program money that's coming from the state, but what you saw, exactly what you named, is expiring grant money that's built into the Learning Acceleration and Support Plan.
Thank you, Dr. Baker.
Good job.
Jamie. We have our Facilities Master Plan Sustainability Policy presentation. Mr. Miranda?
Thank you so much. So as our presentation's being queued up, really thank you to the members of the board, Superintendent Baker, executive staff, and our wonderful audience. Always a pleasure to share facilities updates, and of course, today, the focus is going to be our Facilities Master Plan. And this really coincides and aligns with a few presentations we just listened to, so both on the LCAP side of the house and the UK TK side, you're going to hear a few common themes, I'll emphasize some of them as we go through the slide deck. I think it's going to make my presentation a little easier, it'll allow us to finish on time for certain. So Facility Master Plan, I really broke up the presentation into three primary sections. The FMP, as we call it, the Facility Master Plan, our engagement component, which was plentiful, is what I would describe, and of course, sustainability, which has been an ongoing topic and something we've talked about off and on, really for a good chunk of time. So similar to the LCAP with respect to the Facilities Master Plan, this is also a process that's roughly one year in nature where we want and received quite a bit of feedback just in the development of this particular plan, right? So our architect was hired and joined us last summer, they started with a bunch of the nuts and bolts type of activities, which I would describe to the community as physically walking every one of our classroom spaces, all of our square footage, all of our many acres across the district footprint, to assess building components, lifespan of building components such as sewer systems, electrical lines, that type of information, right? They looked at classrooms, they looked at exterior spaces, field spaces, anything and everything that's within our footprint. We also saw quite a bit of alignment, and that's why we're, we want to address sustainability today, because at every turn, it seemed like sustainability kept coming up and was at the absolute forefront of our discussions. So I'll make sure I tie that in as we progress through the presentation. So here we have a slide that basically depicts our master plan schedule, again, dating back to last August, taking us to where we'll be at the next board meeting on June 22nd. So the goal of mine this afternoon in particular, because the master plan is long and heavy, it's a large-scale report, right, we're talking hundreds and hundreds of pages, we'll make sure as we continue to work with our architect and dialogue with our architect, that we get that in your hands and in the community members' hands in electronic form, because I think that's going to be a bit easier, also in paper form for the school board. We often have at least a few paper copies we keep at our office in particular, in case anybody wants to take a peek at all the specifics behind the master plan. Some of those include, you know, assessments of enrollment and capacity, site-by-site individual layouts and site diagrams with respect to every proposed improvement that we would need to embark on just to get us to where we want to be as a district, right, in terms of educational programs and offerings that we provide. There's definitely that nexus, right? So there was conversations just a short while ago with respect to UK and TK. We know that in many cases, that's just one example, but there's several of them, we know that in many cases, we need the facilities to be able to provide these type of programs and spaces, and I'll get into that deeper in the presentation as well. What you see in terms of the little bar graph or depiction here is two rows for Dr. Benitez, they're in two different colors, but there's no emphasis on the colors. So really, the top one is really just architectural-type activities, these are the milestones that they had to hit and they have been hitting along the way. And the bottom section, and every one of those little circles, really just speaks to engagement activities. So we formed a number of different committees, some with district staff members, some with community members, and I'll speak more to the actual committees deeper into the presentation as well, but just wanted to highlight via one image what that looked like in terms of an actual schedule. So again, really, my goal for today, and in anticipation of completing the master plan and presenting that on June 22nd, is to share some information just in bite-sized chunks, right? Because it's so large in scale and in nature, figure, let me start speaking to some of the highlights now, get some board feedback and questions perhaps right now as we put the final bow on the plan itself. So again, with respect to engagement, lots of committees. District Planning Committee was comprised of various stakeholders, different directors in the district, a lot of folks are in this room, and really what we wanted was their particular expertise, right? Everybody brings forth a different specialty area, knowledge in their respective field, whether it be food service, the education side of the house, or operations, we wanted to hear from everybody, right? So the overriding goal in this master plan effort was to hear from a whole lot of folks, and we did that, right? So that's what I'm attempting to highlight today. We had a stakeholder advisory committee, which included no district staff members. So this was strictly community members, students, folks who were just interested from the general community. In creating and just kind of defining the composition of the committee, we made sure we were well-rounded and covered the different parts of the district boundary as well, just to make sure we had equal feedback from various different folks. Also included our furniture committee here, at some point in time, we actually tailed that off and just made that a standalone effort because of the time crunch, right? We're definitely going harder and faster in terms of the furniture plan. Mr. Moskovitz spoke to some of that with respect to the TK and K furniture that's going in this summer. But regardless, that committee really chimed in on not just the furniture components and goals, but also where we're going with respect to future capital improvements, what that particular area should look like as part of the master plan as well. Number of different folks there too, right? So we wanted to definitely hear from the educators, wanted to hear from students. We're currently hearing from students and educators via our open houses that we set up at various different school sites, and we're looking to get quite a bit more feedback before we really throw down and go with larger-scale purchases for grades one through 12. Sustainability Committee, so we also formed a Facility Master Plan Sustainability Committee, including students, staff members, different stakeholders, experts in the industry, just a number of different interested parties who brought forth quite a bit of expertise and a bit of dialogue into these discussions. The Sustainability Committee in particular probably included way more engaging activities, is what I would say. Many of those meetings were hosted via Zoom, but our meeting facilitator did a good job of just exciting the crowd, generating some interest, making sure that the conversation was not dominated by one particular group. We really got feedback from across the board across a number of different categories. We hear quite a bit about the energy component, and we heard quite a bit of that, again, as part of these efforts, but there was quite a bit of dialogue with respect to food waste, recycling programs, what we're doing on the operations side of the house with respect to being more green as well, and it was great conversation, is what I would share. We put forth an online survey, actually a couple of times, but the one that's currently out there right now, we've seen quite a bit of feedback, right? So lots of responses, we're up in the hundreds now, which we're super proud of. And then we hosted a couple of community forums. These were both in-person over at Browning, held on different days of the week just to mix it up a little bit. First one was in March, the last one was just really a week and a half ago or so. Lot of participants, lot of feedback, engaging activities as well, really challenged folks via certain exercises to start speaking to certain project priorities, right? Where do we see, if we were to identify things into certain buckets or project categories, where do we see the point of emphasis in terms of future capital, capital program needs, right, on the building side of the house? Definitely certain categories that were jumping off the page in terms of the interest in the room, but there was interest across every one of those. So where are we landing? Really where we hoped we would, our target we set internally for ourselves was we wanted at least 500 touches on this Facility Master Plan, right? Our target we set internally for ourselves was we wanted at least 500 touches on this facility master plan, right? Via every one of those different formats. So it could have been the survey route, the in-person meeting route, or the committee, you know, committees that we comprised and developed. But we're north of 600, which is great. That doesn't include other touches, right? So other conversations we've had with various stakeholders, online and offline, email exchanges, phone calls, because we're talking about this master plan and trying to identify all these needs day in and day out, which has been great. So this is really the meat of our presentation, because I know you're likely wondering, you know, what's this master plan going to look like? What are going to be the areas of emphasis? And that's what I wanted to share this afternoon in particular, right? So as we've been having the dialogue, as we've been engaging with folks, as we're talking to the architect, we've looked for common themes, whether it be from the stakeholder side, the community side of the house, our internal district feedback, some board feedback that we've heard off and on over the course of the last couple of years as well, right? And there definitely is alignment with respect to what I'll call 10 project categories. So I want to just briefly go through each one of those 10, list a few examples perhaps, and then we'll be on our way. So the first category of need that we foresee that's going to be a big part of this master plan at its completion is the need for additional school renovations. So we're doing a good job in terms of Measure E and Measure K updates. What you see pictured here is sample before and after pictures of a school modernization or HVAC project at an elementary school. We want more of that, right? So we see and foresee the need for more of these type of efforts, right? Whether it be additional HVAC improvements that make us more efficient or just additional cosmetic-type cleanups, whether it be flooring, painting, roofing-type projects, things that we could do with respect to lighting updates as well. Again, really with the theme being how do we get more efficient? How do we provide better learning environments for our students? This is one of our favorites and one that we've heard quite a bit. So a couple of months back, at three different meetings within the same week, I heard this one brought up, right? So I think one of them was a board meeting, the other one was a parent meeting I attended with Dr. Baker, and the other one was one of our Sustainability Committee meetings. But this is a common theme we've heard quite a bit, right? And this can mean a number of different things for different campuses is what we're projecting. So for one, we know we have quite a few portables and bungalows still out there, right? We also know we've dipped in capacity, so some of those are likely not in use or perhaps being underutilized. As we look at healthy learning environments though, and that came up in the previous presentation, right? Play space, how do we get more green space out there for kids to really play in a sense, right? And just interact and dialogue some more? We see a good nexus there as well. So perhaps the elimination of portables and the creation of more green space. In some cases, we actually walked the site with Mr. Moskovitz recently over at Whittier. You know, there's a few portables that are in, you know, direct conflict with the play space out there or the limited green space that's at that particular school. The simple removal of those portables allows for better line of sight and supervision of kids as they play in that particular space. Grant you, it likely has to expand a little bit as well. But again, just a simple removal of portables could help us quite a bit. At campuses where enrollment is a bit more stable, you know, perhaps we, you know, vision the removal of portables and the addition of a two-story classroom building, just to save us on the footprint, create a building that's a little more, you know, here to stay, right? Perhaps a 40, 50, 60-year building instead of portables that have long outlived their life. And then with green space, what we've talked about to date is, and this is also with respect to, you know, issues we're having with water and the fact that, you know, we're in a drought, correct? So in many cases, the addition of more synthetic turf, just different play spaces that don't necessarily have to be grass is something we want to entertain going forward as well. TK and K, again, Mr. Moskovitz and Cindy really covered a good chunk of what I would have highlighted here, which is great. So this can speed up that part of the presentation. But I just wanted to speak to the facility impact in particular. So we know with TK and K, we need these classrooms not just anywhere on the campus, but on a particular part of the campus, right? So with close proximity to play space, ideally with close proximity to a front office, good proximity and close access to a pickup and drop-off area, but also to the smaller, I guess what I would describe as toilet and restroom fixtures, right? So this is just a different grade level. It's going to be our younger kiddos. We want to make sure we are able to do so via our future facility projects. That can mean a number of different things. Perhaps it's a repurpose and conversion of existing space that we have. In some cases, perhaps it's a new building, right? A standalone building that just identifies those particular needs. Sustainability and energy, and I should have included water, because that's really at the forefront of these discussions as well. So we know as a district, we've done quite a bit. We've added a number of solar carports and solar shade structures to date. We've done quite a bit in terms of lighting improvements with LED lighting fixtures. We continue to do more in the way of controls and whatnot. And again, the addition of synthetic turf fields at the secondary sites to save us on the water bills. We also know there's more to do though. So what you see pictured here is a particular school site with more solar carports or shade structures is what I should have said. We know there's opportunity out there. So whether it be additional renewable-type projects of this sort, additional projects to help us on the waterfront, but additional projects that I'll highlight at the tail end of this presentation with respect to what our modernization projects look like and just being more green in that respect. Health and fitness. Again, this was an area that was discussed previously, so I won't spend too much time here. But again, in terms of mental health and serving the well-rounded student, how do we provide spaces to get them to do something different, right? So whether it be outdoor play spaces, indoor play spaces, enhancement or improvements of our gym facilities. What you see pictured here is rendering of, you know, weight training space or a dance studio. How do we look at these different needs in the district and address some of those needs across the board? Within the campus safety bucket, there's quite a bit that fits in there. So what you see pictured there is one of our projects where we're adding electronic door locks at one of our pilot sites. We know that can be a project that grows some legs, right? So perhaps the addition of electronic door locks to give us those benefits across every school in the district. So again, just a short reminder in terms of what those benefits are, site access control, right? Who's where, who entered which building? What do things look like in terms of, I mean, the ability for us to lock down a campus at the push of a button remotely, right? And then the indirect benefits I described previously, folks wearing their ID badges at all times. That's just an absolute plus in that particular category. There's still additional work for us to do with respect to fencing. We know within this category, we can likely identify needs with respect to parking and drop-off enhancements at a number of schools. Another tie-in perhaps to TK and K, because we know the younger kiddos aren't just dropped off at the curb, right? They're dropped off, there's some hand-holding of those kiddos as they go to and from the campus. We can identify those particular campus areas as part of our master plan. Tech improvements, kind of goes without saying, right? So tech improves all the time, right? What we know as a district here is we have some aging infrastructure though. So some of our fiber, some of our cabling is really getting to the end of its useful life. As part of our modernization efforts, we can likely tie in some of those updates to those systems, right? As we go from school to school. Classroom technology again though, that's something we revisit in coordination and collaboration with our TISB department and a number of educators. What does a standard classroom look like in the future? So these are the type of things we're looking to incorporate into the master plan as well. With career tech, we've all visited a number of classrooms out there and they're awesome, right? In many cases, they entail larger footprints, a larger space, a flex space of sort. But it also comes with, you know, high-tech, high-end machinery and equipment, really giving our students access to potential career pathways, which is incredible. And we see additional need in that respect going forward, perhaps even going down to the middle school level, not just the high school level. Community meetings. So here we are in a community meeting, right? So we have access, we've had conversation in the past with respect to, you know, even board meetings. You know, how do we have board meetings in a central space so we get more community attendance? That's ideal, right? And then that gets us more efficient and more in touch with the public. We know we have certain facilities in the district where we offer professional development and staff development and training such as TRC. A lot of us attended that facility recently for the classified celebration. You've seen some of those buildings, right? So the training rooms, the larger spaces are in decent shape. Several of those other spaces though have outlived their life as well. So we know we can do more going forward with respect to just staff development, professional development, and community meeting space. And then the last category, I believe, is our updated library and media centers. Pictured here is Jordan High School. So again, just full transformation of the space, going away from the traditional library with a whole lot of book stacks and books across the entire footprint, still keeping some of those book stacks along perimeters of the walls in those particular spaces, but creating a space where students just want to gather, perhaps charge a device, work on a project. More Barnes &amp; Noble and Starbucks-like is the way we'd like to describe it, right? And that's really what you see pictured here. Our thought is we can do quite a bit more of that across several campuses. So I'm going to switch gears only a couple more slides and then I'll field some questions. So again, I mentioned early on in the presentation how sustainability was part of the discussion just at every turn. Several of those project categories include a touch on sustainability, right? Whether it be modernization of spaces, the actual one labeled more renewables and, you know, sustainable-type projects. There's sustainability across at least half of those, if not more, right? These are the three primary groups that we've engaged with over the course of the last year or so is what I would describe. Green Schools Campaign, who we've heard from. Awesome group, student-led effort. It's been great to engage with the kiddos. They just impress us at every turn as well, right? So we've engaged with them quite a bit via a number of meetings, some email exchanges, Zoom sessions. There's also overlap where some of these members of these groups or committees kind of sit in on one or two of these. But regardless, just great dialogue to date. With the FMP Sustainability Committee, that was a new committee we formed, just including different stakeholders that I described previously. But again, really great to get the information and dialogue from industry experts, parents that were in the room that also serve in this particular industry. Great information that we've incorporated into the overall plan. And then want to give kudos and a shout-out to Kristi McFagan, who really leads the District Environmental Sustainability Advisory Group. Done a good job in terms of getting that feedback year-round from educators in our district, right? So what are we doing in the way of recycling programs, operational-type programs, and education programs? And it was good to get that particular feedback from that group just to tie in to the global conversation. So via those conversations, what we really started seeing in terms of alignment and perhaps a recommendation is what I would describe is revisiting an existing board policy. So Board Policy 3510, titled Green School Operations, was adopted by the board in November of 2019. That date always has significance for me. That was the first board meeting I attended as, you know, with Long Beach Unified. So I got to hear that conversation on day one, which was incredible. So again, not getting into the weeds in terms of the policy itself, but it includes every one of these categories, right? So here I've listed eight of those project categories that are covered as part of that board policy as it stands today. So you see that it covers quite a bit of ground, whether it's operational-type components, products and cleaning things that we use out there, recycling, which I've talked about, pest management practices, vehicle emissions. It's just all-encompassing, which is great. And I think it served us well and has guided a lot of what we've done. What we noticed though is perhaps in revisiting this policy and recommending an update to the policy is let's take this in a few chunks, right? A few bite-sized chunks as well. So what we're going to recommend is an update to the policy, which is the next slide, 3510.1, which we're going to recommend bringing forward on June 22 as well. So this particular policy is going to have more of a focus on energy in particular. So there's been quite a bit of dialogue, we've heard quite a bit of feedback. We've kind of wrapped it all together and really attempted to digest and identify the particular areas of need and interest and what we can tackle via the proposed master plan update, right? So what we see here in terms of the energy section or energy policy that we're describing is three or four particular areas of focus. Our thought is we would then circle back and just continue to engage in dialogue with a number of stakeholders to talk about the other components. So the food waste, the operations, the vehicle discussions, you know, every one of those areas just warrant additional dialogue. Because we've advanced the conversation so far on the energy side of the house, we feel more ready to get to this point. We want to dialogue quite a bit further with a number of different stakeholders before we bring forth perhaps another update to the policy to touch on all those other areas. So that's kind of where we are to date, right? So I'll just quickly walk you through some of the highlights of the board policy as we've currently constructed it or the draft board policy. So again, an absolute focus on energy and alignment with our FMP and Excellence and Equity Policy. And you might ask, how do we do that, right? So what we know and what we've learned via some of those very conversations is the heat index is different across different campuses, right? Some campuses may have quite a bit of asphalt, not much play space. The heat index is just going to be different at that particular school versus another school. We know the water situation is different across different campuses as well. So this is where if we look at things through the equity lens, we can just identify and perhaps prioritize certain projects over others. Grant you, we want to get to every one of them and improve every school site. But as we identify and prioritize the priorities, as I often say, we're going to consider those type of factors. You know, second item addresses energy and water. We've had conversation with respect to purchasing renewable energy directly from our utility provider. That's something that would be encompassed as part of item number two. For us, there's going to be just a good attention to detail and follow-up with the utility providers with respect to the rates. So right now, we know the rates for renewable energy would cost us roughly 8% to 10% more. Perhaps the market changes though, right? As things continue to evolve, the climate crisis is what it is. We're hopeful that that changes and that can make option two a little more realistic for us as well. With option, not option three, but category three, new construction, we're doing quite a bit, right? So we're modernizing schools, we're adding new buildings, including a new building over at Jordan, which is currently under construction. We know with respect to the projects where we've yet to hire an architect, yet to, you know, really start design efforts in earnest, we can make some changes sooner than later, right? So perhaps immediately following adoption of this policy, we fully transition to green building standards, zero emissions machinery and equipment, right? And we can certainly do those things, in particular where we've yet to design anything or implement the actual construction project. We also know we need to develop a phase-out plan. So there are several schools that we've recently modernized, and those include equipment that still entails fossil fuels, right? So we want those systems to live their life, perhaps it's 20, 25 years later. Regardless, we want to develop a phase-out plan that we would share with a number of different folks and just demonstrate what that would look like in terms of number of years, you know, when would those things happen? Vehicle emissions, there's a number of things we can do with relative ease, right? Just encouraging skateboarding and bike riding, right? So ensuring every one of our schools have adequate number of bike racks and skateboard racks as well, right? Perhaps signage to kind of encourage the benefits of that and the reduction of the carbon footprint when kiddos, you know, attend school that way versus being dropped off in a vehicle. That's another one of those categories that differs from school to school, right? At some schools, we have quite a bit of our students being dropped off via a car. At other schools, we have more kids walking to school. And last but not least, the development of a sustainability task force. So we feel this is critical and important. What we're envisioning at this point is a committee similar to our Citizens Oversight Committee, where they meet roughly on a quarterly basis. You know, we share information and just communicate and dialogue back and forth. Perhaps there's a development and submit of an annual report that comes to the board for the board's information. And it would basically outline our progress and where we are with respect to sustainability projects completed to date, perhaps sustainability projects that are at the forefront in the years to follow. Next steps. So again, quite a bit of dialogue and feedback that we still need to secure specifically in those other areas, right? The food service areas, the operations areas, the transportation areas, which is why we're really emphasizing Board Policy 3510.1 at this point in time, focusing on the energy piece. I was worried earlier when Mr. Suarez wasn't going to list a website, so I figured, good, I've got it as part of my last slide. So lbsschoolbonds.net is where we want folks to go and give us additional feedback. So that's where we've posted the draft policy as currently constructed. We still want to meet with a number of different folks prior to June 22 to finalize the language of that policy. But really just putting it out there for the community as well. Feel free to comment, to email us, to call us, and let us know what you think in terms of the particular language. We're looking at finalizing the report and again, presenting it to you in paper and electronic form, really have the architect working hard and fast right now on an executive summary. And this would still be in the way of a 25 or 30-page report, but I think it's going to be something everybody can digest in terms of what this master plan looks like going forward. And last but not least, what we really want out of this master plan is for it to be a living document. So when I first was before the board and addressing this master plan topic, I talked about the five-year cycle, right? So every five years, we as districts are charged with and tasked with updating facility master plans, which is a good point of reference, good point in time as well. We want to do more going forward though. So we envision this plan being adopted, being approved, being put in motion, but we're going to update it on a regular basis. So we'll assign staff members on the facility side of the house to really just update as we complete projects, right? So as we hear and gather information from the maintenance side of the house, doing actual updates to the report on a live basis. That is it. Can field any questions or comments?
Just a couple of things, Mr. Miranda. One is it would be helpful, given that, as you said, the facilities master plan is a huge document, and I'm going to actually direct it to Dr. Baker, if we could get it, since we have a lot of stuff at next meeting, any in advance, even if it's just in draft form so that we can start looking through those. And then the second thing is, so is the recommendation that we pass, that we approve the facilities master plan and potentially pass the policy at the next meeting?
Okay, that would be our recommendation. We see absolute alignment with both of those components, so that would be our recommendation.
Okay. Colleagues?
Yes, because we're talking about having green options and being... Yes, because we're talking about having green options and being cognizant of that. If we have a large report, maybe we just have it digitally and we save paper.
Absolutely.
And just refer to it that way.
We often produce it in both formats, right? So we'll have at least a few paper copies, but most folks will absolutely access the electronic format. We'll have basically an index that includes basically the various different reports that feed into the master plan. So a sustainability report, that's a part of the master plan, right? That folks can just link into and access that particular area if that's where the interest is as well.
I'm just, I'm a little concerned about passing the board policy and the plan, given the amount of time left for input, when there hasn't been, they really weren't available before now. It very well may work out, but I'm anxious to see them all, because it's important.
Just really quickly, I know that campus security and campus safety in particular has become a larger topic. Has there been any additional references and/or support that you've been receiving focused on the designs of campuses, designs of new facilities, and best practices on certain equipment?
So that's an area where we just keep our hand close to the finger, right? Close to the pulse, right? So Alan Rising is an instrumental player in our program, and he takes part in really a large-scale statewide organization that deals with school facilities and facility priorities, and we do as well, right? So as we continue to dialogue with architects and different folks in the industry, that's at the forefront of our discussions. So we've heard more lately with respect to the addition of cameras, right? Security cameras. There's a lot of districts doing things in the way of electronic door locks, which is something that was already on our radar, which is great. Several districts are having conversations about single-point-of-entry, which we've done. So that's outstanding for us, and just kind of kudos to the district and the board for getting us there, right? But there is additional things we can do, right? And that should be included as part of our overall plan at the tail end. Thank you.
Thank you, David, for all the information. Just a technical question, because I'm a nerd. I went to lb-schoolbonds.net, and I don't see the draft.
I'm sorry. So there's an actual, so we include a number of tabs on the left side of our bond webpage. One of them says board workshops. That's where we dropped it. Apologies. And we'll clean that up as well, just to make sure the community can access that particular area.
That'd be great, thank you.
Thank you.
David, last request from me is, much like what we've been doing with our student outcomes data, that we don't sort of get it all in one big chunk. I know that we have to do it this time because of the, you know, approval of the Facilities Master Plan, but there's at least two strands that I would be hopeful that we would be getting ongoing updates. One is the question that Mr. Miller just asked. So because of our rising interest around school safety and campus safety, right, if we could just get ongoing updates, not necessarily as a part of your overall facilities updates, but just in snippets, right? You touched on the single-point-of-entry, right?